Tonight's forum is for the candidates of Ferndale City Council Position One and Four. There are two candidates on the ballot for each position, and I would like to introduce the candidates for Position One, Herb Porter and Matthew Durkey. And then we've got our candidates for Position Four, which is McKenna Pinto Gonzalez and Wyatt Shedd Stewart. Ferndale City Council is the legislative policy and making body of the city government. Council members are responsible for passing laws through ordinance and policies through resolutions and approve the annual budget initially proposed by the mayor. Council members are elected at large for a four-year overlapping terms and are paid $715 a month. We will follow specific rules for the debate. There will be no opening statements, but instead the introductory question, we tried to tailor it to elicit responses consistent with an opening statement. Each of the candidates is going to have a minute and a half to respond to the question, and we'll have a one-minute closing statement that they'll make. And the order is rotated for each questions. Each candidate has a challenge card. Show us your challenge cards. And the candidates can use this card to challenge or rebut their opponent's response. So we're not going to have one and four, no challenges, but between the ones and the fours, that's what we're going to look at. The challenging candidate will have 30 seconds to state the challenge, and the opponent will have 30 seconds to respond, and each of you can use your card just one time. So I have timers here. Betty Barats and Eileen McCracken will be tracking the time, and the timers are going to flash this yellow sign at 15 minutes, 15 seconds. We'll be here all night. And then the red signal goes up when your time is up. And so then if the candidate continues, a bell is going to be rung, and that means stop talking. We ask that the candidates be respectful of the time allotted and due to the limited amount of time that we have and our desire to include as many questions as possible. So again, to the audience, we just want to remind you to please hold your applause until the conclusion of the forum. We do encourage you to provide written questions for the candidates, and just to know that when we, we will be asking all the candidates those questions than when they come up from you. Questions are going to be screened by our league member Helen Campbell, and the screening is really for legibility and clarity and to try to avoid any duplication. And then, so to begin with, to go first tonight, we're going to start with Matthew Durkey. And then after the start, we're going to rotate the candidate's response, and then on the, the closing statements, Wyatt Shedd Stewart, you're going to be the lead, the leadoff, okay? So we've got the rules. Timers, are you ready? So we're going to start, and our first question goes to Matthew Durkey. And see, we learn as we go here at the league. So Ferndale has about $900,000, we understand, remaining of the American Recovery Plan Act funds received as part of the federal government's COVID-19 response. What do you think is the best use of these funds?
Oh, that's a great question. First of all, I think for me, if I was elected to the council, it'd be more of a collaborative effort to see what the community members would like to see it as. Personally speaking, I'd like to see more of the social services, being a mental health condition educator, seeing how that works. We need a lot of impact in our community. However, it'd be more of like, understanding what the community needs here, and there's a lot of needs for, I would say, mental health and needs that like Ferndale Connect does and our social services. So it's understanding how we can deliver those, that money properly, appropriately, and also very fiduciary that make it very long-lasting instead of like a one-and-done type deal. We need to make sure that we can be a continuous service for the people that can be, that are impacted here in our community. As we know, being a rural community, there are like hidden population groups, so we have to make sure that those population groups can be seen. So with that CARES money, it'd be very, it'd be, I think it'd be incumbent of us to make sure that we use it properly to make sure that it is given to the people.
Thank you.
Okay.
Candidate Porter?
Yeah, I pretty much agree with what Matt is saying, and for the last three and a half years, that's what we've been doing on the current council. We focused a lot on both social services and also a way to help a lot of our businesses work through their COVID situation. A lot of businesses were on the ropes, and we were able to use a lot of that federal money to help them recover and hopefully prosper from there. So as far as where we go from here with the leftover $900,000, pretty much like Matt says, to continue focusing on what the needs of the community are and to be judicious in the way that we invest, and like he says, to, to look for opportunities that are there. There are many needs even now in Ferndale. There's a lot of organizations that are coming to us for financial help, and we sit down and we evaluate and, you know, make decisions on what is overall best for the community in terms of how much money we can allocate.
Great, thank you. Okay, and this is next, the next person to answer is going to be candidate Pinto Gonzalez.
Wonderful. Well, I really do like this question because I'm a firm believer that at the base level, people care about what they create, right? And in order to cultivate the kind of community and to continue the kind of community that Ferndale is historically known as, you know, the love thy neighbor kind of community that we, we've all grown up to know and love, I truly believe that pouring it into our entrepreneurs and our local businesses is the place to go. Because the more people that feel seen and supported within our communities and within our local businesses, the more we see our community as a whole thrive. And I really feel like at, at the foundational level, that is going to be the secret to continuing to cultivate and, and maintain this community. I was fortunate enough to own a business from 2016 to 2020, and sadly, I had to close due to COVID policy. It was MVP martial arts and fitness. But within that time, not only was I thoroughly involved in our community, but I was able to engage with people from all different demographics within it and make amazing friends and my landlords and, and my coworkers. And I just think that that's a, a vital part of what we can do as a city council.
Thank you. Candidate, is, is your last name Shedd?
Shedd Stewart, yes.
It is, that's a last name, okay. Just good. So I'm going to call you candidate Shedd Stewart then.
Sounds good. It can also just be Shedd if it's easier.
No, that's good.
Yeah, this is a good question. You know, I've looked at what the council's already doing. For the last three months, I've been attending every meeting. I think we've all experienced jobs where you think you know what the job is going to be until you show up and find out it's something different. So from the moment I applied, I made a point of sitting in and learning everything I can about how the council currently works. And doing that, I've observed a few different things that I know the funds are currently going towards. Some of those is things like youth sports. I've seen the Ferndale Community Center, which I know the mayor said it's across the building, but really, I think we share the space within the space here, and so, you know, that's one of the needs that we've had, as well as local businesses. And so my understanding is that these funds have a limited window of use, and so I believe we should make sure that we don't let any go to waste, and that they should really be prioritized through a mixture of need and also of opportunity. As what I've seen from the council already is a desire to make sure that funds go towards sources that ideally can become renewable and perpetuate when the funds are no longer in use. So things like making sure it goes to local businesses to both get through the stint of time where they were needed, but also to build those businesses so they don't need the same funds a couple of years from now when it's no longer available. Same with the local community services and the other needs that we're seeing. I think one of the best things we can do is make sure that any funds that show up are still targeted where they're needed. One of the things we heard, I want to say about a month and a half ago on the council when I was observing, was how with the food bank and with a lot of the various service needs that still exist, COVID's impact isn't over, even though certain things are recovering, and that there's still a lot of need that doesn't present itself for a while, so, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go right back at you, candidate Shedd Stewart, with our second question. Ferndale is one of the fastest-growing cities north of Everett. What actions do you think the city should take to support and accommodate this growth?
That is a question that's very relevant to me. I think I'm probably part of that growth. I moved here, I think it was seven, six or seven years ago, and my wife and I bought a home here three years ago, which we are feel very, very blessed and lucky to have been able to do. And one of the reasons we moved here and bought a home here is because it was more affordable than Bellingham and the surrounding area, where we both grew up in Northwest and wanted to be able to be here forever if we can help it. And that's not easy for folks. It takes finding jobs and finding homes, and there's a lot of challenges, and I think Ferndale currently is one of the best places in Waukam County, if not the best place, to try and find a home and build a home in our community. So I think there's a lot of things we can do. One of them is just to have a positive mindset towards that growth, towards the idea that it's good to have new neighbors and an influx of new people and new opportunity and kind of new things to make the town more vibrant. But I think that also looks like making sure that we're seeking options for affordable housing, that we're not creating more barriers but less. I think that, you know, Ferndale needs to be available and affordable to everyone, not just a select few. So, you know, my wife and I barely got our home, and we want to make sure that other people are able to, whether it's buying a home or making sure they just have a place to call home in Ferndale, that that's available and readily available for folks.
Great, thank you. Candidate Pinto Gonzalez.
Yeah, this is actually something I'm extremely passionate about. When my business was shut down due to COVID policy, I knew that I wasn't going to be able to stay purely in the workforce for long, and as an entrepreneur at heart, I did get into real estate as an agent and as an investor. And same to my opponent, I also purchased a home in Waukam County just prior to COVID happening, and I'm, I'm so grateful to have done so because we all know how crazy the market's gotten since. But I think that, that also allows me to have a unique perspective, not only as a homeowner in the community, but as someone who is actively and currently helping people close on homes in the community. I, I really am familiar to the barriers to entry, and I'm shocked and surprised at how little education there is in terms of how to, a home, and, and all the different funding that is available, especially to first-time homebuyers and to young families. And my wonderful husband and I, we, we have three sons, and we're raising our family here, and we're very hyper-aware to the challenges, especially that young families face. I would love to say that I'm a stay-at-home mom and absolve myself of all the mom guilt, but I do work as well as my husband, and we both work very hard and we're fiscally responsible. And I think we can all agree that, especially with the inflation that's happened due to COVID, times are tough on everyone. And so understanding truly what programs are available to you and knowing how we as city council members can help, I think that having real-world experience as a homeowner and as an agent and as an investor, that'll give me an edge and an insight to helping members of our community as a city council member.
Thank you. Candidate Porter, I'm just going to repeat the question because we're talking about growth, and we'd like to know what actions do you think the city should take to support and accommodate growth?
The latest statistics show that Ferndale is probably the fastest-growing city north of Seattle, and it's been that way for the last several years. So we have been proactive on the existing city council to try to address those kinds of things. In terms of infrastructure, the mayor earlier talked about the well situation and the fact that, you know, we can't just think about now, but we have to think about five, 10, 15 years from now. Housing, as candidate Pinto Gonzalez says, that is a big issue, and a lot of people look to Ferndale because even though the prices are increasing, it is still relatively more affordable than other places in Waukam County. And so we've always been in the forefront, even before the state kind of came along and said, yeah, that's a good idea, with the concept of ADUs, the idea of requiring developers to not just have single-family homes, but also to include a certain percentage of multifamily homes to kind of create a cottage-village type of concept. So all these things, and I could, you know, go on from there, but these are things where we have to be proactive. We know the growth is coming, we need to welcome it. And so like I tell people, you can either stand in the way of growth and get run over, or better, get on top of the horse and help guide it in the best way possible.
Thank you. Candidate Durkey.
Oh, this is great. What all three of the candidates say was perfect. There's something we used to say in the Army, it's called improvise, adapt, and overcome. So as an Army veteran, I look at also the impact of housing, and I look at a lot of the data, that's my job in higher education, and everybody is correct, there's supposed to be an impact of about 8,000 to 10,000 people within the next five to 10 years coming influxing to Waukam County. So how do we do that? As candidate Porter said, it's infrastructure. It's a lot of things that need to be in place. I always hear, I always hear people talk, I walk around the community, and I hear people saying, oh, this is good, this is good as it is, but it's good as it is now. But we have to look beyond the future, look toward the future, look how we can build because things, we have the grants, we have the money to build that structure now, but as we get closer to the future, those grants are not continuous, and they won't be there in the future. So we need to make sure that these grants are being used or the money's being used here. And additionally with housing too, I love to use the word diversity. We need very diverse housing communities here. We need to understand that housing is a very tough, tough issue for a lot of people. My wife and I, we both grew up here. I like to say my wife's a Ferndalian, she grew up in Ferndale. I grew up in Bellingham, but now a Ferndalian myself too. And it's the fact that we were able to afford the housing here with a VA home loan mortgage, and that helped us, but there is three houses that my wife and I love that we could not buy, and it's just the affordability of Ferndale. But the consistency of the growth and also the economic, the economic impact that's coming here, I bear a fair share. So I'll just say, there's a huge economic impact, and we need to look at the future and how we can develop it for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, candidate Durkey, we're coming right back at you now again.
Okay.
If you could change one thing in the city's zoning code, what would it be and why?
Oh, good gracious. That's a very tough question, because we look at a lot of zoning, we look at land-use property use and a lot of like, you know, small business, big business, and I look at the downtown, if, the downtown zoning and how that looks. It's a very tough question. I would honestly say that we have to look at how we can impact our business and how we can bring businesses here. One of the things I like to ask people is, what is Ferndale identified as? How can we, what is that thing? Because we always hear the term like Bellinghammonian, or, you know, or Bellingham is the subdued city of excitement, or Linden as the Dutch community. So I ask, what is Ferndale? So how, you know, how can we bring that? It's, it's a very tough question. It's something I'd have to look more deeper into about that.
Okay. Candidate Porter.
You know, historically, over the last probably, oh, two or three decades, Ferndale's been looked upon as pretty much a bedroom community of Bellingham. In terms of the commercial retail aspect of it, most people, including myself and probably many in this room, it's so convenient to just go down the road and go to Costco, Fred Meyer, and so forth. So our goal has been, and this has been an ongoing issue, as the two mayoral candidates were saying, is to try to bring business and retail business to Ferndale. The catalyst program, I think, has been a first step in that. Unfortunately, COVID kind of put a grinding stop to that. We're slowly getting the wheels going. We've extended things for the developers up to 2025 to give them an opportunity to, you know, get the train back on the track, so to speak. So in terms of what you could change in terms of zoning would be to allow more retail and commercial development in the city so it can become more vibrant.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Pinto Gonzalez.
Yeah, I mean, I would just like to echo what both of these candidates have said. I really do feel so passionately for the small business person and for the young entrepreneur, relatively young entrepreneur. I, I love Bellingham, I have no qualms with it, but I'm also not interested in seeing Ferndale become a baby Bellingham. I really think that there are certain aspects of Ferndale, especially its culture, that I want to preserve. And having all the different unique businesses that we have, being able to remove those barriers of entry for opening businesses, I think is, is key, and supporting those businesses and having maybe low-interest loan programs that we can utilize that potential COVID money towards. I also believe that we need to kind of get out of the way of the small-time investor and let people infill these, these little lots here in Ferndale with fourplexes, duplexes, multifamily housing. It's just pure ratios, right? The more units we have available in Ferndale, the, the less that we'll have the need, the lower the rates will become for rent and so forth. And as long as we have an offset in those ratios, it's always going to be expensive to live here. So allowing people to continue to build on land that is not otherwise being used, I think is actually going to be very, very beneficial for us moving forward. And along with the, the taxation that would come from having additional property taxes on those properties as well.
Great, thank you. Candidate Shedd Stewart.
All right, so if you'd asked me this question, I think, three months ago, I would have talked about density of single-family units and the need for ADUs. However, the new laws that we're seeing coming out about development for both Ferndale but also Waukam County and the state have already done a lot to address that, so I'm going to pivot that answer. I think if we could change one thing in the zoning, it would be around the kind of mixed-use commercial, particularly on the north side of Ferndale. We right now have a lot of densely packed homes that aren't really available in walking distance to food, restaurant services, you know, we don't have like a 7-Eleven, even basic things. I don't know if I go so far as to use the word food desert, but we don't also have a really robust bus system, which means that for right now, there's huge chunks of Ferndale and a lot of the places where we see even more development occurring in Ferndale that doesn't have access to commercial. And so I agree with the desire for restaurants and businesses and things to be able to come in, but I'd also like to see if I could, you know, wave a wand and change one thing. It would be to change some of that zoning so that we could see more of that available in the places that just aren't densely packed and don't have it today.
Great, thank you. All right, we're going to come back to you for the next question too.
Okay.
Are you ready? Okay. What is your philosophy on the naming of the Thornton Street Bridge?
I thought we were calling it the Thornton Street Bridge. You know, boy, what a good question that I wasn't prepared for at all. What I'll tell you is that I live about a quarter mile from the new Thornton Street Bridge, and I've been anxiously awaiting its development and completion for quite a while. I fell for the practical joke done, done by then city communicator Riley, where he said that we could all come and stomp up and down on that site to finish it and get it done sooner. And like an idiot, I showed up. So what I'll tell you is I really am just excited to have it done, and I don't care what we call it. I do care that when school starts, there'll be less people right outside of my house, and it'll be easier for me to get to work on time.
All right. No stomping street, no?
You know, if we want to call it the stomping street bridge, I'll take it. I really, my embarrassment can be the city's game.
Okay. Candidate Pinto Gonzalez.
Yeah, at the risk of sounding sarcastic, I'd say to call it one of the best things that's ever happened to Ferndale, just because I think, I'm not in an echo chamber when I say that the traffic is pretty brutal, especially if you're trying to get anywhere on Main Street between the hours of four and six. I mean, you're landlocked. So I am really excited, and I guess we're neighbors, because I don't live far away from the Thornton Street Bridge either, and I am immensely excited for how it's going to connect me with other areas of Ferndale more easily. I don't want to be dramatic in saying that it's too hard to get to, but it is convenient. And so in terms of naming it, I wouldn't say I have a vested interest in it, however, kind of going back to that first term that I, I said in the initial question, care about what they create. So the more involved we can get our community in having a say in how we go about naming it, rather than just saying, well, it makes sense to call it this, or I know this person, or I know, I would love to see some sort of community forum, or a vote, or, you know, kids design bookmarks for the, the county libraries all the time, and how can we include our younger generation? Because they're the ones who are going to be getting the most use out of it, right? So I would just like to see how the city council could maybe cultivate more involvement with the community and our younger generation in creating a, a positive name or remark for, for that location. And if it ends up being the Thornton Street Bridge, then so be it. I don't think anyone's going to be mad about that, but it'd be nice to try, so.
Thank you. Candidate Porter.
Yeah, historically, for those of us that have been here many years, we know that a lot of the roads and streets in Ferndale were named after that first generation of settlers and pioneers that came to Ferndale, Olson Road, Thornton Road, and so on. And, you know, I, at one time, you know, was in favor of maybe naming it after Senator Erickson, but of course, there was a very vocal group of people in Ferndale that, for political reasons, didn't want that. So I pretty much kind of figured, hey, let's just call it the Thornton Bridge Overpass, and let's go on from there. I mean, we got other bigger fish to fry that we're dealing with, so I'm comfortable with just calling it the Thornton Overpass, though I guess in passing, you know, the mayor should mention something historically, that it was Dr. Augustus Thornton that was the very first doctor here, first pharmacist, and one of the first contributors towards a hospital in Bellingham. So to at least acknowledge him, perhaps at the ribbon-cutting, would be a good thing, so.
Great, thank you.
These are interesting. As an educator, I talk about diversity, and I talk about hidden population groups. I actually agree about Thornton Overpass. I was not one of those extreme overly vocal naysayers for Senator Erickson. I will say that I would have been discouraged if they chose to use that name. I think we should recognize our community. I also think we should recognize the hidden communities of our Native American communities that are here as well, too. I think that it needs to be a community effort to be naming it too, not just one person saying, oh, I just recommend this person because I happen to be a friend of his, or whatever and stuff. It needs to be a community effort, and it also needs to be more than just a small population of community. It needs to be the whole population of the community that may not have that voice or the privilege or the seat at the table to be recognized or to actually be what I'm doing right here. So I earnestly think, let's talk to the community, what they want. If it's Thornton Overpass, I'm all for it. I mean, that, and as her, as, you know, candidate Herb said, being a longtime person, yes, those names have been there as well too, so, as a longtime, as a longtime resident, so, yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, candidate Durkey, next question is going to go, start with you.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so the, the city is currently working on the design for the new city campus, and the facility is going to provide a new courthouse, city hall, and council chambers. This would free up current facilities for community use. What is your opinion of the plan, and is this the best use of cities, the city's resources?
I just had some conversations recently about this, and I will say this, I'm 100% for it. We need to look at growth, we need to look at development, because we do have the funds, we have the grants, we have the money now. So why not do it where it's less impact to our community tax dollars, our property tax dollars, and to, to the families here? Do it now, because we are looking at growth. I mean, you know, for better or for worse, we are growing, and we need to be ready for that growth and development. I've looked at the structural for current city hall, the annex here, and a lot of other places, over capacity. I mean, that is really tough to be over capacity. Right now, like at the college that I work at, we're looking at a $25 million public civic project to increase our 11,000 students that we have. We have to look beyond just what is right now, and I think it's helping understand that we have to look toward the future, not looking at what's, what is here right now, because we can say, oh, yeah, this is working great for us, but if we have like architects, engineers, public utility workers, our city workers and administrators all lumped up into one room, have to share a staff room, have to share office space, have to share meeting rooms together, it can get convoluted, it can get complex. So it's knowing that we have to grow, we have to think beyond what we are now, so I'm for it.
Thank you. Candidate Porter.
Historically, Ferndale's been known for repurposing many of its buildings. The current police department building used to be a library. Before that, French Brewery used to be the library at one time and also the police department. But we're in 2023 now, and those times have changed. And I agree with candidate Durkey that we need to look forward, we can't just think about now, the present. In making this decision, it, we have to think about things 15, 20, 30 years from now, long after many of us here have passed on or, you know, have stepped down from the council. So in making those decisions, even though some of the council members and some members of the community say, well, it's, it's costing too much money, I tell them, every time that you delay it, it's going to cost more and more and more down the road. So we've invested a grant of $1 million that could only be used for the design and development. When the engineers are done with that, probably towards the end of the year, then we'll be able to look at what exactly we have to work with. To me, to try to come up with things beforehand, to me, we're just, you know, we're barking its, you know, just doing the wrong thing, because we, we need to have the facts, and until we get those, there's no sense barking up the wrong tree.
Thank you. Candidate Pinto Gonzalez.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to lie, I'm divided on this concept. As a potential future city councilwoman, the idea of a brand-new lavish location where I get to kick my feet up as I listen to the community's qualms, uh, sounds great, and I know that it would be massively beneficial beyond that, so I'm not trying to patronize it. However, I will say that at the risk of making, minimizing it, if I had someone who's willing to contribute a third of the money to buy a house, and I didn't have the other two-thirds to buy a house, I, I couldn't buy the house, right? So I think that in, in the risk of not being fiscally responsible, not having confirmed funds to support this build and relying solely on different methods of taxations of our community is a little bit risky, but I'm willing to continue that conversation and, and educate myself. Now, on the flip side, I'm lucky enough to work with Cole Crusoe Brothers Construction, where I'm actually a project manager and a superintendent. And I will say that there was a project we bid on for the Bellingham Police Department, and they wanted the entirety of this project done for about $600,000, and we bid at $800,000. They said it was too much, they went back to bid half the project, and the timing was not correct, inflation hit, and we are now doing half the project for almost twice as much as we bid the original project. So I do understand the validity of taking the opportunity when we have it, especially if there's funding available.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Candidate Chad Stewart.
Thank you. I am very much in favor of this project. There's a couple of reasons for that. I appreciate what Councilman Porter said about kind of the time on this and thinking 30 years in the future. I think the opportunity is more than 30 years out, I think it's something like 50 years out into the future. And while I certainly hope I'm not serving on the council 50 years from now, I do hope to be a resident and to be in this community 50 years from now. And so I think the idea of being able to invest in a building that both allows Ferndale's staff to grow, and to, you know, we can hear that and go, oh, my gosh, it's a cost, but I think that's too simplistic. We all look at things like the condition of roads that we want to see improved, or other projects we want to see done. There's a limit in terms of just the people we can put on projects when we're at capacity in the current building. So the opportunity for more staff isn't just an opportunity for expenditure, it's an opportunity for more workers to keep growing the city and the needs of the city. In addition to that, the service needs in Ferndale are real. You know, the community services center, which we share space with, shares space with the jury room that's just over here on the opposite corner of the building, which means that when a jury trial is occurring, people can't go into the services center and take use of those services. And the need for the services center has gone up almost 10 times in the last two years. So where it was 40 families a couple of years ago at this time of year, it's over 300 families now. That means that there's a huge need and opportunity here for us to expand services, to expand our city employees' access, and to expand what our city can do. As much as I like an old bank, as where we have our city hall, and that has kind of a pull-yourself-up mentality, there's more opportunity we can take advantage of here.
Great, thank you. We're going to go right back to you again, starting on this next question. What, if any, plans or legislation or policies would you propose to mitigate the impacts of climate change on the city of Ferndale?
I'm not positive that the flood was directly a one-to-one correlation for climate change, but I can think of a lot of things following immediately from that that I would love to see happen, and other changes I'm sure we're going to see as a region environmentally as time goes on. I think having funds and policies in place to be better prepared for more disasters. I mean, the flood, for some people, it was a huge disaster. For me, it was more of an inconvenience. I missed work and had to replace a heater. Neither of those were fun things, but it wasn't losing, or having significant work redone on my home. But I do expect environmental challenges to continue to occur in our region, and I also expect to see, you know, the number that candidate Durkey shared about, it was 8,000 to 10,000 people coming to this region. That number may be more if climate challenges lead to more displacement and relocation of people in Wacom County. So, you know, I'd like to see both plans, an acknowledgement that the need is there, and also plans for how we can accommodate growth, and perhaps even more rapid growth than we expect, if some of these disasters do affect where people move, live, and want to relocate, as well as regionally how we're going to respond to potential disasters.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, as critical of a thinker as I believe myself to be, I wouldn't say that I'm necessarily qualified to speak on the topic of climate change. However, as a citizen of Ferndale, I can echo those statements in saying that the flood, while it was terrifying to an extent, and a lot of my friends were displaced for a while, it didn't affect me massively. But on the contrast, one of our biggest jobs that we did right after that horrible flood was we rebuilt the Sumas City Hall, and the fire department, and the police department, and the community center, and the library, and the costs associated. Thankfully, they came from lots of grants from different organizations that hedge against natural disasters. However, that being said, those grants are often hard to navigate and extremely hard to cash the check on. So I do believe that an additional hedging for issues like that, in terms of putting additional funding away for problems should they arise, specifically within Ferndale, is a great idea. But I also believe that we have to be smart with where we build. There's a lot of land that is historically known as floodland in Wacom County, a majority of Sumas being part of that, a lot of Ferndale right behind Dairy Queen. We always joke that it becomes a pond, and you can go fishing or kayaking, right? I think that we also need to be very, very smart, as desperate as we are to fix affordable housing and fill in, we have to be smart about where we're putting these housing units, and where we're putting the development, because otherwise, we're just creating future problems for these generations we're trying to look out for.
Thank you. Candidate Porter.
Same question. Olympia has passed a lot of laws recently having to do with climate change, and of course, the cities were obligated to follow through. So anytime that we take on a new project, whether it be, you know, building poems, or commercial retail, or manufacturing, all these new laws have to be kept in mind. To touch on what candidates were saying, one of the things that we've done in the city is we've updated and created a more robust emergency operations management plan, specifically around the area of flooding. So we are in the process, so it's still a few years away, where we're planning to reroute the River Road that goes by Pioneer Park, and actually run it behind the baseball fields, and create a bigger berm to protect Ferndale, particularly the lower areas like Central Elementary School and so forth, during periods of floods. And I agree with what the candidate is saying, is that as things change, we may wind up getting a lot more floods. Everything varies from year to year. So being proactive on the part of the city, I think is a very integral part to kind of help address some of these climate nonconformities that occur.
Thank you. Candidate Durkey.
Wow. Has all three talked about being critical, thinking about climate change. I actually do a lot of study of this. As part of my program that I'm in, in traumatology and community counseling, we look at the impact of what's going on in the communities, and that includes weatherization, that includes the climate, that includes a multifaceted lot of things. The biggest thing is, and I do strongly believe that there has been climate change, we've been impacted with the congested climate change of 50 years versus 300 years, or millenniums. So in that 50-year time span, there has been increased flooding, increased heat. My wife and I were just in Arizona for a doctoral conference, and it was 115 to 118 degrees down there. That's really, really high. I'll station, when I was in the Army, I'll station in Fort Irwin, California, in the Mojave Desert, where it gets about 120, 125, and in Kuwait in Iraq. So you can imagine the heat impact. So up here, we have to look at all the variables that we look at. There's like the independent variables, the variables that impact us, the variables that we don't think impact us. And these variables are, one, is how do we conserve water? How do we do conservation? How do we look at the new building codes, or old building codes that need to be replaced? How do we look at our, how do we look at carbon? Thank you. How do we look at our carbon that is increasing there? Also look at a lot of things, but as a city council member, that's actually a big thinker-type thing. We have to look at our local policy and procedures, and a lot of things here impacting. The flooding was, I honestly think was, the flooding was something that we need to look at for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We're going to start with you again, candidate Durkey. What makes you uniquely qualified for this job?
Oh, wow. Well, as a longtime resident, I grew up here. I love this, I love the community. I left when I was 18 to join this organization called the US Army. I saw the world, some great places by the Kuwait, Iraq, Somali, and some interesting places, and was in Fort Irwin, and I came back home, because this is my hometown. I grew up here when I was adopted. I love it here. The other things that are unique is that I come from a very critical perspective as a thinker, as also somebody who, as somebody who likes to learn about all the issues, and also looking at those impacts of how we can develop those, and also working collaboratively. As a director at a college and as an educator, I look at the fact that I'm a servant leader. I look, I talk to the people, share a personal story. Every Sunday, I go to our local diner, because I know it's a place, it's a place that doesn't think like me, but I like to listen to them. I like to hear everybody's perspectives, and see what they are thinking, and what they understand, and where they're coming from, because, one, they're our neighbors, two, they're our family members, and three, we can learn from everybody. And so this, as somebody, for me, I look at from educational, from somebody who grew up here, and to take that knowledge and help and understand our community, and to relay that information as a community. I'd also like to plug in, my last five years, I was a finance and accounting clerk in the Army. I got done with combat arms, and as a finance and accounting clerk, we look at the budgets, we look at finance, we look at how we can disaggregate that to a lot of our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Porter.
Yeah, I came to Wacom County in 1973, and came to Ferndale in 1979. I started the Spanish program at Ferndale High School and retired 38 years later. I also served in the Air National Guard for 28 years, and retired as a full colonel. I also worked as an inspector at the border, both for customs and also for remigration, and my own Spanish and English translation and interpretive services. So all these experiences that I have have helped me to, you know, understand what leadership is all about and so forth. And when I was asked four years ago to run for city council, my initial reaction was, well, thanks, but no thanks. But then as I thought about it some more, I realized that, you know, I had something that I could contribute. I think the greatest thing that I bring is a sense of common sense and sensibility. Sometimes people get a little bit extreme, they get their emotions to get the best of them, and ultimately, for me, the goal is, what is the best for the city of Ferndale? So, and I realize that whatever decision we make, or I make, or how I vote, I may not please everybody, but ultimately, I go to bed at night with a clear conscience, knowing that I voted thinking of what's best for the city.
Great, thank you. Candidate Pinto Gonzalez.
Yeah, I wish I had something as grandiose as the council members to my right, because for instance, current council member Porter served in the National Guard longer than I've been alive, so I don't have anything to compare to that. But the reality is, is being a sharp 27-year-old woman and owner and business owner, and as a current entrepreneur, I have the perspective of a project manager in a construction world, where I, as a daily job, work with not only taking what is hypothetical from the city councils and from the community members, but actually executing it into real life, and doing it in a fiscally responsible and conservative way. I am proud to say that I have a father who was a sheriff's deputy and went into the Secret Service, and he taught me from a young age about safety and security, and about the values that law enforcement, and our fire department, and other social constructs offer us. And I believe that, at the base level, I'm someone who really loves this town, and I desire to live here, raise my kids here, and create a place where they can afford to live, and more importantly, will enjoy living in. And I'm just thrilled to be a candidate.
Thank you. And candidate Chad Stewart.
Thank you. I would have hoped to have answered this by talking about how I was at a different stage of life than the other folks that are currently on the council, and that there's no other young candidates, but in reality, I'm lucky that I have an opponent who's also, you know, invested and wants to be here at this age. Instead, I'd like to focus on some of the things I'm currently doing, which is that I like to show up and ask questions and do the work. For the last three months, I've attended, I think, all but one meeting, which means I know I've attended more than every other candidate but Councilman Porter, who's on the council. And I think I have attended more than a couple of council members. All of that to say that, you know, I've been showing up, and I've been observing how the council currently works, how the interactions occur between members, what kind of issues currently get brought before the council. And then I've been going out, and I've been talking with the folks that run and, you know, participate in Chamber of Commerce, Ferndale City Services, you know, folks on staff. I've been trying to make sure I understand what this job is, who the people are involved, and what needs to be done to do this well, how to do that in a way that listens. You know, I've got a background in mediation and reconciliation work, also a background in insurance, which is unique, I think, but maybe not as useful. But I think at the end of the day, I know that, you know, I work hard, I show up, I think hard, and I want to make sure that we're already able to hit the ground running the moment we start. And so I've been putting in that work for three months. I think that's unique, and I intend to continue that work if elected.
Okay, thank you. Going to start back with you again, candidate Chad Stewart. So Ferndale's biggest celebration is Pioneer Days.
Yes.
You have Pioneer Park, Pioneer Community Center. Your roads, as mentioned tonight, are named after the pioneers. How do you think that focus affects your relationships with tribal residents and your neighbors, and what might you do to mitigate if any issues around that?
I appreciate this question. Right out of the conversation feels a little bit like those balls that are on a desk can click, we keep just going in the same pattern as we're sitting here. But it's going to be time to think, and so I appreciate that. I think there's something really wonderful in how Ferndale has an identity right now in Pioneer Park, but I also wonder if the focus on it doesn't take into account new folks that are coming to town, and also doesn't potentially run into some of the challenges you're talking about there, with, you know, if we have a view on our identity in the past, particularly an identity that may have been in conflict with some of the local peoples' groups in Lulami, there's, I think, the potential for challenge there. And so I think a sensitivity to not just recognize and appreciate and be thankful for where we've been, but also cast an identity for Ferndale for the future, right? We already heard and talked about today of what's, you know, Ferndale's identity. I think we absolutely have one, but I think as Ferndale changes, that identity will continue to change. And so making sure that not just what we celebrate historically, but what we identify as and kind of what we celebrate in the future takes into account the full community around us, our neighbors, the folks that have been here since time immemorial, and everyone who is going to be moving here, and, you know, adding to Ferndale and what makes it special.
Okay, thank you.
Do you mind if I have you repeat the question?
No, not at all.
I'm sure I'm understanding the focal point.
No, it's fine. Just that your biggest celebration is Pioneer Days, one of the biggest celebrations. You have beautiful park, Pioneer Park. Your community center's name is the Pioneer Community Center. We heard tonight that a lot of the city's streets are named after pioneers. And the question is, how do you think this focus affects your relationship with your tribal residents and neighbors? And is there anything you might do to help mitigate any negative impacts of that?
So from a personal perspective, it's never had any impact on me, my ability to serve my fellow neighbor, my connectivity to my friends and family. My grandparents owned property and homes out on the Lulami Reservation, and I enjoyed going there every summer for barbecues, every Christmas, and just getting to know the community. My best friend grew up there. However, I can understand that as a greater whole, that could be a cause of tension or strain. The fact of the matter is, is that our neighbors in the Lulami tribe, they were here first. And I feel like they, as a culture, have a lot of experience with this area, they understand the land better than we do. Talking to them and including them in conversations is vital, as how we approach the rivers, and how we approach our growth in the community at the risk of taking forested land is very, very important. And just including them in that conversation, because once again, people care about what they create, and I want them to feel just as involved in this community, and in its creation and evolution moving forward, as we are. That being said, I do think that it is important to pay homage to the old settlers that brought us here, because we would not be here if it weren't for them. So it is a bit of a duality. But that being said, I don't think that they're mutually exclusive. I think that they can both be celebrated, they can both be honored, they can both be respected, and we can figure out now, as a current society, the best way to gel those two things, and create a positive path in discussion and otherwise moving forward, whether that's including Lulami language in the high school, or so forth.
Thank you. Candidate Porter.
To piggyback on what McKenna's saying, is I can tell you that in the past, when we've had events here, we've always invited the Lulami Nation to participate, whether they've chosen to or not, you know, that's their decision. We have the Fiesta Patrias during the middle of September, where Pioneer Park is used to celebrate Mexican Independence Day, along with other Independence Days in different parts of Latin America. Being a Hispanic myself, having taught, you know, Latin American culture and language, I understand that whole concept there. I agree with McKenna, you can have both without being mutually exclusive. You know, the part of old settlers, that's a legitimate part, that's part of the history, okay? We recognize and acknowledge, you know, the Lulami culture and its history. Both can coexist, and what bothers me personally sometimes, just like this whole thing a few years ago with Confederate monuments and so forth, is you pick people against people and create, you know, a scenario which really isn't there. So I believe that both can be exclusive. The city council and the city of Ferndale maintains a very, very positive relationship with the Lulami tribe, so.
Thank you.
Wow. Very interesting different views, and very, very collaborative views of duality of identity here. I'm just going to say this personally, I'm going to get a little bit personal here. I grew up here. I was part of the organization back in the day that started with an M and ended with a one. And I understand that most of us were native minority or other groups back in the 80s, and we did it to protect ourselves, because we were the unspoken people here. We were the unspoken people that were immigrated here, or were here first, and we had to protect ourselves in the high school. These were named, so looking at these values, I would say that we do need to honor, respect our Native American tribes. I'm best friends with a famous artist from Nukzak. I'm best friends from somebody who's Lulami, who is like way up in the educational level here at Lulami. We need to honor, but also we also need We need to honor, but also, we also need to honor our, the people that as well, the pioneers that came here as well too. But with that, with these dualities, there is need to be a compromise. There needs to be understanding that the Native American population, the First Nations were here before, the pioneers, and they had a very robust community, they had a very robust identity, and we need to make sure as a community to honor that. We always talk about Community Day, Pioneer Day. I here Columbus, Columbus never set foot in America. So, let's think about this, Native Americans been here for a long time, the Lummys, the Stonehommage, the Nuxak, we gotta honor them.
Thank you. All right, can come right back at you. Thank you. Do you think public recreational facilities in Ferndale are adequate for its growing population? And if not, what do you propose to do to increase these facilities? And how would you fund it?
Well, thank you for this. Don't get off my soapbox from that. Last question here. Short answer, yes. We do need a youthful recreational facility, because I used to work in the Ferndale School District, I work in a community college with youth, and looking at the community around here, I used to work for the homeless, for homeless youth here in Bellingham as a homeless case manager. We need recreational facilities, we need places where our youth can go. Skateboarding is a great thing. I used to skateboard as a kid. I had one of those Steve Nash boards that I appropriated in certain ways and use. And, I mean, we need, we need things that where our youth can develop, because a lot of times I see them walking up and down Main Street, fine, but also there needs to be a thing where they can develop, mature with mentors, or also use their energy for other things too. I look, I used to be the, I used to be a WFC Ranger coach for 22 years because I had skill set, I had accreditation for that. As a recreation coach for that level, only certain groups of kids were able to play because it was too expensive. So having a recreation facility that is impactful, that's open to everybody without economic hardship is a, is a need in our community. So I 100% agree having these recreational facilities. And we, we need to look and invest in how we can support that growth, because as I always like to say, our youth are the future. If we didn't support our youth, where are they gonna be tomorrow?
Thank you. Candidate Porter.
Yeah, I think that facilities we have now are a good start, but there's always room for improvement. We're in the process of building a skate park. Hopefully it'll be starting, they'll start building it probably in the spring of next year. Once the rains come, we have to, you know, forego the building till the weather is conducive. Earlier, I believe during the Mayoral Forum, there was mention of the fact that through ARPA money, we have provided money to some of the youth associations as far as baseball and football and so forth. We have our baseball fields at the end of Second Avenue, just down the road here. We have a soccer fields, even though they're in the county technically, on Smith Road and Northwest. We have parks that are in the process of upgrading and so forth. But yes, as Ferndale grows, there's going to be a greater need, hand in hand, for recreational facilities. I'll give you a little bit of history. During my second year of teacher, or third year of teaching at Ferndale High School, we had a bond issue for a swimming pool at the high school, an indoor swimming pool. Had to have 60% to pass. It failed by two votes. It was 59.992%. We hit the crest of the wave, and after that, it was never the same. And I imagine if we had a swimming pool in Ferndale, wow, that would be awesome.
Thank you.
This is a topic I do feel uniquely qualified to speak on, because as a mother of three boys, I know all about keeping children busy, and I have experienced the direct correlation between the work-reward relationship, not only personally, but in relation to my children. They can't get up and go get a job and go make money, but what they can do is they can get their butts out in the yard and drill until they know how to hit that soccer goal and then go out and succeed and get the adulation and the praise and the respect that the hard work cultivates. So I do think sports are immensely important in our modern-day society, especially as these children adolescents get sucked in more and more to technology and phones and iPads, and you can tell I have an opinion about that. But that being said, I think that it, I have the ability to speak on the fact that while my husband and I, I would say, are massively blessed and successful now, there was a time where I did have to apply for a grant for my son to play Rangers because we could not afford it. So for me, and I've had to do that with my other children for others, various things, for me, it's less about the facility and more about accessibility. What are we doing as a community to further support those families? It shouldn't just be on the Rangers to fund that, to support us. How can we as a community get behind having additional grants or funding for children who are not able to do that? Or transportation, if their parents are working two jobs. I would like to look in that perspective versus theoretically building a sportsplex or something.
Thank you.
Can I get the question one more time?
You can, yes. Gotta find it. I've crossed it out, but I found it.
Thanks.
Do you think public recreational facilities in Ferndale are adequate for its growing population? And if not, what do you propose to do to increase these facilities and how would you fund it?
All right, so my playground days are mostly behind me until I have kids. But I'll say that I think, to echo what my reporter said, we have a really good start, there's definitely room to improve. And I also want to stress that recreation isn't just sports, it's not just, you know, competition, it's, it's play, right? It's getting out and having fun, and there's parts of our town that we don't really have good access to parks currently. Prior to, my wife and I having our home just by the high school off Malloy, we were on the north end of Portalway, and there aren't any parks to speak of that are easily accessible there. It's not a lot of sidewalks, not as much walking, and so I think one of the things we can do is not just improve the recreational options we have in the parks that we have, but also improve access to them and then some of the facilities in them. I am excited, as I've observed the meetings and I've heard that there's a new development that's gonna go in on Portal, and with that is gonna come, I think, the first combination of like a public-private park, which I think is a great opportunity in a way that we did, or the city was able to create more park and more recreation while simultaneously not having a large expenditure, because it came with part of the plan for the building, and that was something that the private builder helps provide. So I think there's a lot of creative ways and engagement that we can see to expand on these services that don't just come right out of the city coffers. But I also think that we want to make sure we invest in this, and that looks like, you know, allocating funds and continuing to allocate. I think it also looks like the conversation we had earlier about ARPA funds, right? Some of those funds went to youth sports, and I think we can make sure, before those funds are depleted, that we ensure that, you know, again, those go towards that and allow for perpetuation. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is gonna be your last question before your closing statements, everybody. And so I'm gonna start again with candidate Shad Stewart. So the number of people using the Ferndale Food Bank has close to doubled in the last year. What can the city do to support its most vulnerable residents?
This is one that is gonna come down a lot to funding. You know, there are certain ways that aren't just financial, you know, there's the shared communal growing and the gardens just off of the parks over here behind Pioneer Park. But fundamentally, we have to make sure that we're both seeking to fund and I think using community awareness to both highlight that need and, you know, solicit donation and funds. As I said earlier, the immediate impacts of COVID, in some respects have lessened for certain, you know, families, certain places, but there's a long tail, not just to the sickness, but to the emotional and the, the, the financial impact for families. And so there are families that right now are going without, and it's not always obvious, it's families that I think wouldn't have necessarily needed those services three years ago, and between inflation and added costs, it suddenly is a need in a way it wasn't before, and that's driving a lot of that increased utilization. And so I think we need to really prioritize, especially with funds that are available still, making sure that we are increasing our contribution towards the food bank, and I think we need to absolutely make sure that we also just highlight that there's a need that, you know, folks that are members of our community are going without in some pretty fundamental ways, and that there's things we can do to, you know, collaboratively and communally make that better.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think that, this is a very important question, because the primary role of government is to serve its citizens and its communities. And so I think that this may actually, in my opinion, be a more pressing question than some of the others we've been asked, only because a basic necessity amongst water and sewer and housing is food, because if you don't eat, you don't survive, and if you don't survive, none of the other things matter. And I know that's kind of a crass way to put it, but in reality, if we're facing situations where we're watching the need for basic food supplies double in our communities, I think that there is a bigger root cause, and it's, it's gonna take a lot more digging into that issue as a multifaceted issue than just, you know, upping the donations. I think that there are other outreach programs, and I think that the Poverty Task Force is a really great reference point for that. In a perfect world, your family members would help you, your community members would help you, your church would help you, but I understand that there are certain people who maybe don't have family, don't have access to those resources, or have burned those bridges, right? So I do think that having kind of a, a landing pad for individuals facing hardship, especially in this time of inflation, is massively important. And so I think that primary cause number one would be allocating additional funds to supporting the food needs for our members of our community, for sure.
Great, thank you. Councilman, candidate Porter.
Yes, as recently as last year, we provided a very substantial amount of money to both the Ferndale Food Bank and also the Miracle Food Network, which is the other organization in Ferndale that also provides meals to people in need. And in fact, at our committee meetings just a couple days ago, actually yesterday, we were in the process of preliminary, giving preliminary approval to providing more funds to some of these organizations. So, going back to that, you know, $900,000 of ARPA funds that we still have available, I'm sure in the coming two years, those will be some of the funds that will be looked at to address some of the needs that the Ferndale Food Bank and the Miracle Food Network will have, along with other organizations that have needs too.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. As everybody said, there is a definite need for food insecurity. I deal with that a lot with my clients, not my clients, with my student veterans, and also when I worked in the Ferndale School District and the Special Ed Department. Food insecurity is a big problem in our community. It's also the hidden population that tends to be the ones that are targeted the most because of this. What I have done, I think that I very much appreciate what the city has done by donating my, to the food bank and the Miracle Food Network. Those are great options, I think those should be a continuous option. Another option that I also see is that, what we did at my college is that we have a culinary department, and we donate the foods that we do not use to the food banks, to the other organizations that can give out the food. Little statistics, about 70% of the food in restaurants or grocery stores is wasted, thrown away. What can we do with that food? It's a day old, but I mean, it, it can go to a better use by handing it out to these organizations or to people that can give it to the people that need it. A program that I started, I connected with the warrior wounded, not wounded warriors, but the warriors wounded down where I work, and I got a $50,000 grant where I get a food donation, I can buy it. I have a fridge, I have a little department where my, my students, because of pride, my student veterans were very prideful. You can look at any veteran, we're all prideful, but they can come in, no questions asked, grab the food and go. And I think a lot of times, a lot, we need to make sure that we have these places, systems of play where they can do that with, I better stop, I can go on, sorry.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to closing statements, and we're gonna start with candidate Porter. You have one minute to make your closing statement.
All right, I'll keep mine short. Over the past several years, I've noticed a continued growth in Ferndale, and I recognize that a balanced approach to business and residential growth is very important, along with sensible environmental practices. I decided to run again for city council with the goal of working together with people that represent different interests, achieving the greatest good for the greatest number. I'm a fiscal conservative and believe strongly in a common sense approach to government. I promise to continue listening to people's concerns and ideas with an open mind. I'm willing to make tough decisions, always taken into account best for the city. If elected again, I look forward to working for you, the residents of this vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess it's me, right?
You bet.
Closing statement, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for showing up. Thank you for candidate and also council member Porter and the city council and the government here at large, because they do an amazing job. Council Porter, I've looked at, or candidate Porter, I've looked at his record. He's amazing, but again, too, I also feel that we can have more diversity and, you know, bring youthfulness, and I shouldn't say youthfulness, let me kind of backtrack a little bit. I feel that we can understand and, oh boy, I'm just slipping here, it happens. I'm just, you know, just kind of in closing, I'm just gonna feel that I feel qualified, I feel that, you know, I just wanna help the community, I feel very passionate about what I do and how I work in the community, and I may not be the best speaker sometimes, but I'm also the best, I am the best listener, and I feel that I have a lot to give and do want to give back to the community that I live in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, candidate Pinto Gonzalez, your turn for statement.
Well, I'll go off of your comment, I mean, I'm hopeful to bring youthfulness to the city council. All jokes aside, I first off want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. It's absolutely incredible, and I'm thoroughly honored to be here and just obviously very excited to participate. I'm not gonna tell you that I have a lot of elected office experience, because I have none. However, I would not say that I have wasted a single moment of time as a young adult, as a mother, as a parent, as a working, contributing member of our community, as a participant on the local level, as a participant in elevating my friends and family members' lives in any way I can. I, I was very grateful to have parents that raised me right and raised me here, and I hope to do the same and be a positive influence for change and a continuation of all the good things and all the right things that Ferndale stands for.
Great, thank you. Candidate Shad Stewart.
All right. So if you haven't caught it already, my name is Wyatt Shad Stewart, and I'm running for position number four. There are a few different reasons why I wanted to run. The first one really boiled down to the fact that, and I think it speaks to, my opponent and I are both running because we're young homeowners in town. I don't think it requires homeownership, but there's something about having your home that I think changes your relationship to the city and where you live. And so as I had a home here, and as I've treated this as my home, I don't want Ferndale just to be where I live, I want it to be where my home is, and I want that to be true for other folks, and so I want to make sure that they, you know, we build roads and create ways for that to happen. The next reason that's really important to me to run is because I think that Ferndale's a place where we can also thrive, where we can have dreams of small businesses and opportunities and create a community here. And the last reason, it's gonna be quick in 15 seconds, is because I think it's really easy to be apathetic politically. It's really easy to feel hopeless in light of certain things in the world. And for me, you know, engagement looks like being here today, and I want to make sure that we know people that in our community can feel engaged and participate and care and make a community. So, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. First of all, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I just want to thank the candidates for being here and for running for office. Ferndale, 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 you lost a ballot measure on your poll by two votes. I know you've had to toss coins for, for candidate races here in not the too distant future. So do remember that your ballots, our ballots are gonna be mailed on the 18th, and you have to have yours postmarked or in a drop box before 8 o'clock on November 7th. So please remember, also you have to sign that ballot, and if you are mailing it, we recommend you get it in early and vote. So thanks so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, good job.
All right.
[music][1789.63]